And for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm showing eight twenty-nine.
Oh, wow.
So am I.
Have we ever started before eight thirty?
I don't think so.
New, new sheriff in town, I guess. Holy crap. It'll be a one-off. So at this time, if there's any, uh, public comic period, in terms of anything. Anybody in the public has anything to say? This would be the time to speak. All right, with that said, I'm looking for a motion to, is there any changes in the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I just want to note that there was one minor change to the tobacco license renewals. You have the updated version in front of you. We received delayed application from, uh, Dollar General in Eden Valley, uh, since the, um, tobacco licenses expire on February first. We wanted to make sure it got on here. So there's just one addition in there. That's the only change to the agenda.
And that would be in the consent agenda?
That is on the, yep, it's already on the consent agenda.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move the agenda with the amendment.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion made by Schmidt, second by Johnson. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I was wondering when.
Motion passes.
Yes, I was wondering when you wanted to mention that, the time change, will that come up now during the?
We'll discuss it.
We'll discuss during the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, we'll go into the consent agenda. Uh, Andrew, if you could take, walk us through that.
Absolutely. So we have approval of the January second board meeting minutes, approval of the Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts Payable. Approval of, uh, temporary on-sale liquor license for Cedar Mills Gun Club. Approval of the tobacco license renewals. Approval of the purchase of a Bobcat T seven-seven-zero-T four Skid Loader. Uh, setting the public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance regarding solar and wind energy system moratorium. Approval of the twenty-twenty-four administrative goals. So as, um, Commissioner Braddison mentioned, we realized after the last meeting when we set the public hearing for this to this date, that there was not sufficient time to have the required publication. Requires ten days of notice in the local paper, um, prior to having the public hearing. Um, so what this does is moves that public hearing date to, uh, our next meeting on February second. Um, and we will have the, the notice published in the paper tomorrow. This ratifies that change.
I think it's February sixth.
February sixth, thank you.
I think it's February sixth.
Okay. So at that time, the public can, that's where then the public would be talking about it.
That's when we'll have the public hearing on the proposed moratorium ordinance.
And after that point, we can either pass it, move on.
You have the opportunity at that point to consider the ordinance. You could approve or deny the ordinance, or you could table it to a future meeting.
Okay, okay. Uh, with the consent agenda, is there any, uh, questions about it?
I do.
Go ahead.
I do. I have questions and some comments that I would like to make in regard to the agenda. I realize that today we're voting to set a date for the public hearing, which we have discussed will now be February sixth. And there are a number of folks, I was wondering if folks would come today because of the mix-up with the date, and that's, that's wonderful, that, that there's a showing of folks with a concern. But please hear me out. I want the public to know that this is a moratorium, and I didn't even know what a moratorium was until, uh, we started to discuss it here a couple of weeks ago. And it is a document that will stop all applications. The language, I feel, is very strong in this document. And they claim that the moratorium is necessary based on comments from townships, cities, and members of the general public. And that now will be open on February sixth. The document also claims that the land office has been under great pressure with applications for solar and wind requests, and I just checked with our land office, and all of last year, twenty-twenty-three, there were two. Two. So I'm, I'm concerned about some of the justifications, even for a moratorium. The wording concerns me. The word emergency is mentioned ten times in this moratorium. Five times, a claim is that there is a threat to public health and safety. I serve on the local Meeker County Public Health Board. I also serve on the three-county Public Health Board. There is no comment about anything having to do with public health threat. In fact, on Thursday, um, in the news, it stated there are one hundred and five schools in Minnesota that are using solar energy to generate, um, cost-cutting for their energy. And I fear that this moratorium will stop any new solar or wind business to come to Meeker County. And aren't we wanting business to come to Meeker County? In fact, six blocks from here, we have a business that makes parts for wind generators. They employ people here, they pay taxes here. Even our own Meeker County Co-op, the Rural Electric Company, they've been promoting green energy for years. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the strong language. I fear that what this moratorium really wants to do is make more government control on property owners, schools, businesses. I do not see an emergency or a public health threat. I want the, I want the public to know that this is open for comment on February sixth. I am in full support of any opportunity for the public to voice their concerns to this board. So on the agenda for today, I will vote in agreement with, um, the open meeting for February sixth, but I am not in agreement with much of the wording of the moratorium, which will be discussed at that time. Thank you for letting me share my information.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem. Commissioner Braddison?
Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Paul? Just a quick question, Andrew, you can probably answer this. In the, um, accounts payable, we had, uh, a payment to endurance for three hundred and twenty thousand something dollars. But then does, that has not been subtracted from the fund balance yet, correct, for?
No.
The transfer station till after today?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, yeah.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
May I make a comment in reference to Commissioner Braddison's comments?
Yep.
Um, excuse me, Commissioner Braddison, I think there's a misunderstanding when you're reading the language and that there is not, I, as your legal advisor to the county board, I could never get behind the county board of commissioners to ever say that there will never be a fuller or wind energy project in Meeker County. So I would caution on that extreme view, because I think that would be setting up the county for liability, and I don't, when I, we were having a discussion with the whole board. I made it very clear that if we're gonna be moving forward, that there needs to be an openness to allowing this in, and it's just a review of what is going on as far as regulations. Now, you mentioned that in twenty-twenty-three, um, the zoning department only had two phone calls. I think it's worth noting that one of those phone calls to our zoning director was in the scope of how many acres? If I may ask that question?
Sixty-four thousand.
Sixty-four thousand acres, and so I think when we're talking about the scope of these projects, not just the pressures of one phone call, but it's one phone call creating a extreme pressure on the county, and I think that's where we would be justified in being able to move forward. And as your legal advisor, I would have to either recommend moving forward with the moratorium, or saying there's not enough facts to be able to move forward. And with the pressures and conversations that are going on, I think it's appropriate to set a public hearing, but a- at this point. So the first step, I think we have met the threshold for it being appropriate to have the public come forward. So just so that we have a clear understanding. And then if there's additional questions regarding the language or, um, how the statute works, I'm open to any commissioners coming forward and having that discussion with me.
All right, well, thank you for that clarification, Brandy, so.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion made by Johnson?
Second.
Second by Schmidt. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, motion passes. Next up, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. Morning, Greg.
Morning. Greg Schultz, Land Use Director, this morning, I've got one item for the board. VA one megawatt solar project for the northeast quarter of the north, of the southwest quarter, section thirty-four, township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, Dassel Township for parcel zero-seven-zero-six-one-zero-zero-one-zero and zero-seven-zero-six-one-one-zero-zero-zero. As I mentioned earlier, this is one megawatt solar project, couldn't be about twenty-five-hundred-and-ninety-two single-axis tracking modules. City of Dassel did sign a waiver for this project in July eighteenth of twenty-twenty-three, to be within a thousand feet of their, um, of their district. Construction is expected to start twenty-twenty-four, follow twenty-twenty-four, conclude twenty-twenty-five. Um, currently, this system is in, has been passed through the system impact study and currently in the facility studies, I think it's well within the, it's down the road for the interconnection agreement with Excel Energy at this time, so.
Okay.
As I noticed from the planning commission meeting, there were a fair amount of, um, neighbors who showed up with interest in this particular project. Some of the comments were, you know, can devalue age property, um, one of them was hazards of, uh, possible hazards from the actual fields themselves. One of the things that we did do with this, one that we haven't done in the past, is we actually put a couple of, um, as you noticed, in the conditions. Put extra live screening for the north and west side to kind of shield those residents from that, uh, viewing that, that project or the field. And the last one we did was number sixteen was soil testing for heavy metals. Quarter along east boundary, which is down slope of the, uh, on the contour, so any rain runoff, that would go in that direction, and if there was any contamination possibility, possibly you could get a detection on the lower slope of that. That's something we haven't done in the past.
So those last two provisions are things that were clarified from the meeting itself?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions?
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, uh.
Problem.
Greg, what is the, how close are we to residences there?
That one there is the.
I'm sure it's.
The one to the northwest, we are about eight hundred and sixty feet from it, and the one from the west is thirteen hundred and eighteen feet, so.
Those are the closest two.
Those are the closest two neighbors, other than the Dassel City Boundary, but there's nobody within, that's close to that boundary, in the city limits, yep.
So were the residents who showed up, did they get their questions answered?
Well, yeah, they got responses. You know, we couldn't answer some of the things like devaluation of property. We have no determination on how to do that. It's no different than like feedlots or any other business. We don't know how those businesses devalue properties. We have no way of determining that. As far as the hazards are concerned, we don't know that either, you know, this is, we know what's in, uh, I did get some information from, uh, At Home West on their, uh, on their, uh, monocrystalline modules to kind of show what's in there for hazardous metals. So that's what we'll put in there, and that's what we'll have for testing in the future every five years, as determined by question sixteen. We'll have that in there. Just determine, just testing for those metals that we know are in the actual modules themselves.
So the conditions of the ordinance were met with some additional, the three additional pieces.
Is seven hundred and fifty feet the same for solar as other businesses?
Businesses?
Those that you mentioned?
Um, it is further away. From commercial businesses, our standard is only about two hundred feet. Feedlots, it's, it's usually a quarter mile, that one, those types of businesses.
So at one point during this meeting, I understand that four out of the five planning commission members were interested in continuing this for thirty days so that they could get additional information. What happened with that?
Then I think Chairman Janzis went the direction of let's put on extra conditions if you can do, uh, handle the concerns of the citizens in that direction.
One question then, why was there so many more, like, I think there are six different families? Why, why did there so many more families had, had been focused on this particular one and, uh, for a reason versus anything else? Is there something else?
As you know, we have the others, we have three other sites. They're just to the east of this, across seven hundred and, uh, was it Twenty-Fifth Avenue, that are already in place. We hardly had any from those, but this one here, I don't know if it's because it was across the road. I'm not sure why we had more response on this one than the other ones in the past.
Is there, uh, any other discussion in terms of, uh, the Dassel Township Solar Garden? Uh, with that said, I'll be looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the conditional use permit one-six-three-one-six for a one-megawatt solar garden located northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section thirty-four, township one nineteen, range twenty-nine, Dassel Township with.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Braddison. Uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna speak against this motion. Uh, I do not believe that the folks from, that attended that meeting were heard. I think that meeting should have been continued, just as they did the feedlot that they addressed on the first item of business of that particular planning commission to allow these questions to be fully answered for the residents who are gonna be living next to it. So I cannot support this motion.
Okay.
I am not against solar. That's not the issue. I just want our people to be heard and their questions answered.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about this?
I'd, I'd, my comment would just be, um, the planning commission did add conditions to it and did approve it, so I have a hard time. But if we send it back to them or don't approve it, I mean, what, what is gonna change? I mean, that's, that's the question I would have, so, that's.
And if it is postponed for thirty days, and on February sixth, this board approves the moratorium, then this project will be put on hold for up to a year. Am I correct in that? It would be put on hold then for a year?
There's a clarification there, I think.
Not necessarily. You could move forward approving this, knowing that it was, um.
Prior?
Prior, the application was put in prior to when you guys were starting your discussion of the moratorium.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that said, there's a motion in play. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you, Greg. And moving on, Andrew Letson, Tony Administrator.
Yes. Uh, so the next item on our agenda is approval of appointments to the Southwest Minnesota Adult Mental Health Consortium. Um, if you recall, we discussed this very briefly at our last meeting, that this was a, a board that we identified, um, that we had not appointed a commissioner to. Uh, the governance structure of the Southwest eighteen, as it's colloquially known, um, has three boards, an executive governing board, advisory board, I'm sorry, executive commissioner board, advisory board, and then the governing board. Executive Commissioning Board provides overall oversight, they approve the budget. Um, the advisory board is appointed by county boards as well. Those individuals don't need to be commissioners. And then, um, the advisory board then appoints the governing board, who also don't need to be commissioners, and they are the ones who provide really the day-to-day oversight and management of the organization. The, um, executive commissioner board, we currently don't have a commissioner sitting on. The advisory board, Tina Shank, our, uh, one of our human services managers, serves on that board, uh, for the county. So what we'd be looking for today is identifying a commissioner to serve on the executive commissioner board, and we'd recommend that, uh, Tina's appointment to that be ratified, um, and, and reconfirmed today. Um, Commissioner Olberg, um, emailed me this morning expressing interest in serving on this, uh, so with that, I can turn it over to you. If you have any questions, I'm available. And Paul's also here, Paul's been involved with this as well, and, um, is available for his questions.
And I noticed Paul is on the governing board, right?
Paul's on the governing board, which was.
That will never, that will not change with any appointments today, right?
Correct, because we don't have, or you don't have the authority to appoint anyone to the governing board. That's done by the advisory board. It's very complicated.
And just to further muddy the waters, uh, the, the joint powers agreement had not been signed officially by three counties, um, or two counties, Rock, and I think, uh, Lincoln from the Southwest Health and Human Services, if I'm not mistaken. And thus, um, it's causing this agreement, the joint powers board rules and all of this to be reevaluated currently. Um, the Southwest eighteen has procured legal counsel to redo the joint powers agreement, which will likely have to come back to this board. In our history, I don't know, we haven't had a board member sit on this board. I believe that it was delegated before. I don't know, I don't have those records. I'm glad that the board is taking this up for representation. But the ground is moving underneath all of this. Part of the other issue is, um, Devoin Valley Health and Human Services had been the fiscal host for this body, um, and they have given their sixty-day notice to no longer be the fiscal host for this body. So that too is up in the air. For adult mental health initiatives, they do not need to be a joint powers board. This is but one of, I think, eight or nine different initiatives in the state. This is one of the few that has a joint powers board or a governance structure similar to this. So again, reiterate, I think it's good to have board involvement as the ground is shifting underneath all of this.
So there hasn't been a Meeker County representative on this board in the past?
As a, not a, not a commissioner, no.
But there has been representation?
Yes, I, I've been doing the representation.
And you have a vote?
I have been.
Will this position be a voting position?
It will be, yes, yes, and I think it's valuable to have a commissioner sit.
Yeah, and Commissioner Braddison, to that, that's, that's where we get into the fact that there's three different boards who provide governance over this organization. And so the, whichever commissioner you choose to serve on the executive commissioner board would have a vote on that board. We also have an individual who has a vote on the advisory board, and currently an individual on the governing board who has a vote. It's complicated.
Yeah.
It, it, yes.
Hence, hence the need to.
Yes, there's a need to streamline things and change things. That isn't, while that is coming forward, the question for you today is who do you want to appoint to the executive commissioner board, and do you want to reappoint Tina to the advisory board? That's the question in front of you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve and appoint Commissioner Olberg to the Southwestern Minnesota Adult Mental Health Consortium, consortium, executive commissioner board, and Tina Shank to the Southwestern Minnesota Mental Health Consortium Advisory Board.
All right, we have a motion by Steve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any other further discussion?
The only thing I will say is, is Paul's spot on. We have had several commissioners from the other counties that have approached us asking us to get a commissioner involved, so this is great. The only question I really have is.
You wanted to do it?
Oh, no.
Your opportunity may come in the future, yeah.
Um, you could identify an alternate, um.
I, I, you know, just in case, because, you know, there are times when we all have conflicts and if it should be an important issue. Uh, and no, I'm not interested in the alternate either. But I just, I, I don't know, I, I just wonder if we shouldn't have, how do you think, Paul? Do you think that's a prudent move by us or not?
Uh, you know, I don't think it's a bad move, um, to do that. Um, you know, you could do a delegate, um, through Tina or myself.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Um, because I, I know we're at those boards, we can communicate with the board and bring things back. It's.
I know, I prefer that method because they have their fingers into it already.
Already, yeah.
So is that something we need to approach today, Andrew, or?
Um, I don't know if we can appoint someone who's not a commissioner to have a vote on the executive commission board. But if what we're looking for is to be able to come back and communicate what happened at that meeting, then we don't need to add someone else to it.
Okay.
Good.
So there was a motion on the board. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. With that, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
And we're up to administrator's report.
Um, I, I, I don't have a report for you today.
Oh. Can't even report on the weather in Florida?
It was nice.
And no warrant needed for the Packers.
There was a, when, when we came home, there was a seventy-five degree swing, so it was unenjoyable.
I do have a question for Andrew, though. That still leaves us, even when we paid the three-twenty as we did today by approving that, that still leaves us one point one million in that account.
There, there's other costs, so with endurance, we're still working with them to get caught up with what they owe us. And so there's other expenses that are, are potentially still out there as well. Um, additionally, we know that we have, you know, potentially an expense in the event that we ever need to cap and enclose the facility. Um, and so at some point, you know, we've been working through identifying long-term solutions for the property. At some point with that process, we'll want to identify what's an appropriate fund balance to leave in there. Um, you know, we're, we're probably not talking a very significant amount of money that we could pull out for other uses, but there may be some. Um, and we can have that discussion further down the road. That's something we've identified.
No, I just wanted to ask that quick question, because it just seemed like we're, we're running a lot in that fund, but if we still have timely issues with endurance, that makes sense.
I knew that'd come in chunks, and, yeah, I noticed the fund balance too, but then I saw the payable, and I think the last time was two hundred and some thousand, the payable on it. So it comes kind of almost quarterly.
As we switched the, as we switched the contract from where they were collecting the money and then paying us, to us collecting the money and paying them, there has been an issue with us, um, having an accurate accounting of, they still owe us money. And so we've been holding back on making payments to them until that we have more than enough invoice to cover what they owe us. So that, that's the issue that we're working with.
So do we have like a balance sheet of what, now that we finally have numbers in play, what that, that is making or not making? After, you know, having more concrete numbers, after a year, no, it's been a year plus since?
Yes, so.
Greg took over that part, right?
You know, as we looked at the, um, the potential sale of the property, and then we, we had made the decision that that might not be a viable path for us, and we started to take a look at bringing the, um, the full operation in-house. Um, we've continued to work on that process and identifying exactly what those costs would be, um, to hire on additional staff and how that plays with our, um, um, with our contract with endurance, how that would offset there, so. There, there are still flux that's out there, um, and we won't know that for sure until we make some of those changes. Um, but as I indicated to you in email relatively recently, there's, you know, maybe another player who's out there as well, so we want to explore that too, so. There's, um, what we know is that when we went through the budget process and we identified that the need to increase our fees on the, on the tip fees and the demo fees, um, that we believe we're in a good spot with our revenue coming in to be able to cover all of the expenses that are there. Um, you know, I don't, we don't have a really solid balance sheet at this point.
Gotcha. Well, that's, that's basically what I was worried, in terms of what the cash flow is doing, everything, 'cause the fund balance seems to be going higher, and it's like going, maybe we just, you know, as long as everything's moving and they're taking stuff, not, there's no reason to panic and move too quickly and getting rid of it, if there's actually a positive cash flow.
There is, yes. The, the question always is, you know, long-term, what does it look like for us?
Yeah.
And are we doing it in the, the most efficient way?
Lots, lots of balls still in the air.
The community, yep.
Should be good for advertising if it's positive cash flow, regardless if we're trying to move it.
Yep.
So, okay. Any other questions for Andrew? Any other questions for Andrew in terms of that? Otherwise, we'll move on to Commissioners Committee update. With that, Julie, you wanna lead the way?
Yes, I would like to thank KLFD and the local paper for. Printing information about the upcoming open forum and the date changed. Now I suppose that will come out in the paper and on the radio again. I had a meeting last Wednesday on the AIS that was on the tenth. And, um, they had an end-of-year report from Waterfront. There were three folks who were voted in, um, for our president, vice president, and secretary. There was a new committee member, Cindy Zikala was the new committee member. She was welcomed. Quite a presentation from Waterfront with a huge, um, booklet of all the information that they have collected. From their testings and sites over the summer. So that was nice. Um, we went over the potential budget and. That, that took care of that meeting quite well. Um, then we're meeting here today and tomorrow I'm going to participate in an open meeting law. Um, webinar that's coming up. And Thursday night I have the Public Library Pioneer Land. That'll be in Wilmer Thursday night. And I think that takes care of my report. Thank you.
All right, Julie. Paul, you wanna?
Sure.
Keep going.
Well, I had a Prime West meeting, and just a little fact, kind of fun fact. Uh, of the twenty-four counties that Prime West, uh, has on the joint powers board and the clients we serve within the. Twenty-four counties, there are forty-three individuals over the age of one hundred. So I just thought that was kind of a fun fact. Now remember, that's just the ones under Prime West. There's probably a lot more that are over a hundred, but. None of the last forty-three over a hundred years of age. Um, financial position, uh, just remains excellent. Total cash balance at the end of November was one, one hundred and forty-four point seven million. And that's an increase of forty-one point one million, uh, for the year, um, from the end of twenty twenty-two. So, uh, cash position is good, but we were reminded that if DHS changes formulas or does anything, that cash could evaporate. Rather rapidly. So, um, we're gonna continue with this, um, Magic Fund Investments, which has done very well for us. Also, the cash sweep, which I've spoke of before, is still working out really well. But when you have that much cash on hand, just, you know, you're getting a lot of interest simply based on the amount of cash. Then, as the MRC alternate, uh.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah.
It was a crappy day to drive up there.
It was a crappy day to drive up there. Um, but, uh, I went up there on Monday. Um, the big topic is the drainage, uh, which, uh, that agreement has basically stalled. Um, there were some long faces. They were very disappointed in what was going on and the agreements that they thought they could arrive at. That they weren't arriving at. Um, so, pretty significant disappointment in the fact that there was not more progress made there. And then we had a presentation from the surveyors about re-monumenting, uh, and there are some grants that are now available. Um, to help in this cost of getting everything re-monumented within the, uh, our, our county. Uh, I don't know if we have applied for those or not. I, I haven't checked. Um, and then we went to an interesting discussion. About the flag, the new flag. And, um, really wasn't the purpose, wasn't on the agenda, but, um, uh, Commissioner Kruger from McLeod County wanted it added. Uh, they did give him an opportunity to speak with it, and, um, they're just encouraging those who are interested. Any counties that are interested to create a resolution, uh, and send a resolution forth if they support not changing the flag. Simply because of what it will cost us to change it. And I don't know what it would cost us here at Meeker County.
I, I was thinking about that this morning. Um, we don't have that many state flags flying. There's maybe a handful. Um, the bigger cost would be in the, um, the sheriff's logo. Um, because they use the, the seal in that. Um, and so, that, that would be the bigger cost. Uh, we have maybe, maybe a couple of flags, maybe three.
On a personal note, I'm disappointed that the new flag will not bear the name of Minnesota on it. You know, I mean, hang them all up in a row, you're not gonna know which flag is ours. You know, because we don't even have our name on it anymore. So, um, I was, I was in agreement with them, but Mister Kramer, they wanted us to. Band together that day, but I think Mister Kramer from, Commissioner Kramer from Renvo County said it right. None of us sitting there had the right to speak for the other four members of our commissioner boards. So therefore, that kinda made a moot point and we moved on from there, but, um, uh, personally. Yeah, I would support something just saying, hey, we don't, depending on how everybody else felt.
Um, question on that. Do we have any teeth in that resolution? Is that just a county just saying? We want, want this, this flag to stay the same?
It, it's something that you could provide to, um, our local legislators who have, um, you know. What has been reported in the media is a veto on, on the new state flag design, um, new state seal design. So that's something that you could provide to them.
Who will make the final decision?
So.
The seal and the flag.
So, my understanding, based on what's been reported, is that the redesign commission selects the design. And then the legislature has the ability to veto that choice. So, it, if they don't veto it come May. Then that is the flag and the seal.
So it will be a vote by the legislature?
I don't, I don't know if they need to take an affirmative vote. I think it would be a vote to just veto it. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure of the procedure, but that's what it has sounded like in the, um, in what's been reported in the media.
Okay.
So it won't hurt.
Okay, is there any extra legalities that we have to?
Worry about repercussions?
Worries about repercussions, extra work for the county attorneys?
I think the question is, what's really the impact to county operations, you know, as we look at these policy stands? You know, the, the direction that we've gone with it is what really, you know, taking stand on policy issues that really impact the county. We can put together an estimate of what it would cost, um, to, to do a turnover and then provide that to you for consideration.
Crow Wing County, I think, is the only county so far that has actually passed a resolution, correct?
I don't know.
I, I think.
I believe, I believe that they did. Yes, now that I think about it, I believe that they did.
So, I just wanted to bring this up. I thought, you know, it's a seed in your mind to think about.
And my appetite is like, well, if it, if it, I don't know why, I, like I said, I didn't even want the Meeker County logo to change. It's because of, you know, what's the point? But if this costs a little money and stuff and we kept it the same and it didn't cost us anything for having the resolution, I wouldn't have a problem. Putting one together if it's not too complicated on the administration front. I don't know, that's my appetite, but I don't know if it has any teeth, like you said, just kinda shows. So you're saying more if it, it really, if we're doing a resolution, it should be based on policy decisions on the county end. Rather than not more political, you know, what's going on?
Policy that you adopted a couple of years ago is that's what.
And, and I would be in favor of that type, but if you put together a thing that said, uh, it will cost the county this many dollars of changing it. Then we could go that route.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that something real hard to do anyway, Andrew, or not?
I would have to work at department heads to determine what they would see as the actual cost, so.
I'd have to ask if the group has the appetite for that or not.
I mean, I can put together, I can work on putting together that estimate and, um, come back to you with that, so.
I would think every county in the state would ask that same question. Think of the cost across the state to make this change.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was kinda Doug Kruger's point. He said, we just bought all the stationery. And he said, we got enough stationery to last us a long time. Now we gotta throw it all away if the flag goes through, because it would be.
I guess I don't know why anyone's buying stationery.
I don't know. It was just his example. Just his example.
Wrote it right in computer.
I can't argue with that, but, uh. Well, then something simple anyway, I don't know, but, yeah.
Sure, we can put together.
I wouldn't wanna waste any bunch of county time dealing with a political issue, 'cause it's, it's not worth that part, you know?
Then the last thing was, um, was in a trustee, um, training session for the hospital. And I took, um, the morning session, had one on governance. Uh, and I, I'm getting the slides. They'll be sending them out. I'm gonna share them with you because they were really interesting. Uh, about running meetings, about how to interact and so forth. And so, I will share the governance, and then there was an advanced governance in the afternoon session. Um, the gentleman who gave it, um, used to be a hospital administrator down in Grinnell, Iowa. He now travels around several states, uh, giving presentations and helping them with getting, if you have a dysfunctional board. He works with them to get them back all, working together and how to work together. Uh, teaches at a college. He got up in that afternoon session, and I, I'm gonna be honest with you guys, I thought he was gonna have a heart attack. Um, he was talking so fast. He only had an hour and fifteen minutes, and he was packing it, 'cause he wanted to give us time for questions and answers afterwards. I thought he was gonna have a heart attack. He was sweating so much up there, it was just, uh, he was just. But, uh, his information was really phenomenal. I will share those, um, with you. And yes, Julie, I am also gonna be on the MCIT, um, webinar about learning about open meeting law, so.
Very good.
That's it. We have, do we have a map meeting today?
Yeah.
Yes.
Services are here.
I'll have to look at the agenda. I'll, I'll let you know.
Yep.
Here.
Steven?
Uh, not too much to report on. Paul took MRC for me, because I had a full schedule that day on some, on business. And then, uh, other than that, we had EDA and last on the fourth. And basically, uh, set our slate of officers. Um, you know, Joe Keakley from Watkins wasn't there, so he became vice chair of, uh. Of EDA.
That's how.
Sorry, no, Development Corp, right? And Danny became the vice chair of EDA and Joe was, uh, M, MDC.
Really happy about that.
Um, the other thing, they're looking at, uh, a couple of things that we went over was, uh, they're gonna check with Emily Wood. On become, using her as an attorney, um, because they just, um. Used her on some other things and it went really well, and they've been having some struggles as there's some turnover where they've been working with right now. So they wanna try and get, uh, things streamlined and work with Emily if she'll accept, uh, helping us out. And the other thing we talked about, we, uh, uh, a piece out of Cosmos. They, the recycling center down there, uh, needed to redo their loan, um, just because they traded a piece of. Basically because they traded a piece, they wanted to trade a piece of equipment that we were holding as collateral. So we just had to kinda rewrite things and, and, uh, allow them to move forward on that. We signed off and then took the new piece as collateral, so. Them were the biggest things I had going on. Other than that, yeah, there's, I got a map and a care meeting today. I got a full slate of meetings today. Making up for a quiet start to the year, it looks, so.
All right.
And AMC on Friday.
I had EDA with, uh, Steve, and we're also trying to figure out the audit, auditing situation too.
Oh.
That the cost is going, no one seems to want to do that job, other than jacking up the cost. For the EDA, so we're searching avenues there, so. Uh, then I had a one watershed, one plan meeting, and we talked about lawyer stuff, and I just tried to move that right along. 'Cause I don't know what they're talking about, you know?
They don't either.
Yeah, just trying, figuring out the JPE, so, um, I, I just try to basically say, whatever they had figured out, let's move on. So, and then I also had, uh, Meeker in Motion on Thursday. And, uh, just learning about Meeker in Motion. They were gonna have a joint virtual meeting with McLeod in that morning, talking about confrontation, but. None of it had to deal with wrestling, so I just kinda bugged out then, 'cause it's like, oh. That's how we deal with confrontation at home, so, I guess some people use words instead of action. Less than lightning, so. But no, it, it was, I think there's about nineteen members. And I think they basically went on to, uh, go to the county. I think it was Kristen and Chris and is it Shannon?
Shannon.
Shannon, that we were gonna, uh, give some tours of the Meeker County offices, so, later on that day, so. I think usually you're more involved in that part.
I was part of that day chair group as well, but I chose to not come back from Florida for it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, they toured the jail, they did, we had presentations for the different departments, and, um, I heard it went very well.
Good deal.
So thank you for, um, being willing to go and give the introduction.
Yep, it was brief and not good, but, yeah. It's who I am. So, with that said, I think we can adjourn.
Very good.
You think?
We will. We don't need a motion for that, right?
We don't.